It's called the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, October 7, 2021 at 7:02. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Monroe, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
President.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Here.
Trustee Gallagos.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
And Village President Ballerine.
Here.
I have a couple of things under my President's Report tonight. First is I'd like a motion to appoint Natalia Waiter to the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy, term to expire 2022.
Motion is made.
Motion by trustee Gallagos, second.
I'll second.
Second by trustee Evans. Ms. Monroe?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes. Second is we have a proclamation celebrating the shared Homestead legacy of Riverside and Druid Hills. I would request that trustee Marsh Ozga read the proclamation for us, please.
Right, this is a proclamation celebrating the shared legacy of Riverside and Druid Hills. Whereas residents of both Riverside, Illinois, designed in 1869, and the Druid Hills neighborhood of Atlanta, Georgia, designed in 1893, recognize their good fortune to be living in the first and the last suburban residential communities to benefit from the innovative and naturalistic landscape plans of Frederick Law Olmsted, known as the father of American landscape architecture. And whereas both communities are listed on the National Register of Historic Places and enjoy the peaceful sense of place created by Olmsted's vision and design, and whereas both communities share the goal of being responsible stewards of the public lands, parks, curvilinear roads, and opportunities for healthful recreation laid out in Olmsted's plans, and whereas both Riverside and Druid Hills have local organizations dedicated to sustaining Olmsted's visionary plans for generations to come, guided by his concern for humanity, his love of nature, and his sense of community, and whereas this common interest and dedication can be greatly enhanced by sharing information, ideas, and important milestones, such as the bicentennial of Olmsted's birth in 2022, and whereas both Riverside and Druid Hills invite residents and visitors to join in learning about our communities, protecting our environment, and preserving our cultural and physical heritage. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village of Riverside, Illinois, the Frederick Law Olmsted Society of Riverside, the Druid Hills Civic Association, and the Olmsted Linear Park Alliance hereby acknowledge and celebrate their mutual bonds and their joint commitment to fostering a partnership of mutual benefit to ensure Olmsted's legacy of Parks for All People, Community Building, Public Health, Sustainability, and stewardship endure for generations to come.
Thank you, trustee Marsh Ozga. I asked Aberdeen to read that tonight since she is very much involved in the Olmsted 200, as well as the Olmsted Society, so I appreciate that. Thank you. I have one more thing. Last Saturday, Donna and I rode in the Second Annual Tour de Proviso with 25 other riders from Riverside, joining about 150 riders from Broadview, Bellwood, Maywood, River Forest, and Oak Park. In the words of my new friend, trustee Miguel Jones of Bellwood, "I'm still on cloud nine from the Second Annual Tour de Proviso. To see this unique diversity of western suburbs on full display, it's like, on full display like that was not only special but historic. I am proud to call you all my neighbors." Our joint goal was to encourage our residents to engage with our neighboring communities to understand and embrace our diversity. This will not only lead to making our communities more welcoming to our neighbors, but also allow us to better understand our strengths and challenges. I'd like to have special thanks to Mayor Katrina Thompson from Broadview, Mayor Andre Harvey from Bellwood, Mayor Nathan Booker from Maywood, Village President Kathy Aducci from River Forest, and Village President Vicky Skamen from Oak Park for their warm welcome of our residents in their communities. I am also proud and honored to announce that the Third Annual Tour de Proviso will be hosted right here in Riverside in October 2022. I look forward for us all to come together and welcome our neighboring communities to tour our iconic streets and enjoy the warmth and hospitality of Riverside. Managers' report?
I don't have a report this evening.
Residents' comments? We have Mr. Spatney would like to speak.
Well, that explains where you got the nice tan from that ride. Donald Spatney won in Woodside, Riverside, Illinois. I just wanted to compliment everybody that had something to do with the new path in the Swan Pond. Nobody was more opposed to the idea than me. And I'm here to tell you that it exceeds immeasurably my expectations. It's really, really nice. The meander of it, the design, and lamp construction ought to be the go-to people in this village for concrete work. Both there in the sidewalks since they've just done, I mean, the finish is flawless. It's really, really nice. And when it's planted and so forth, you know, it's a tremendous asset. And it, in a way, shows a whole new vista when you walk down and you see that snaking meander that's built into it and trees, they left the trees close to it, which I was very worried about. It's just great job, okay? That's all. Oh, and I'll donate a bench up where the old little dam used to be in memory of my wife, who died about a year ago. But I'll get back to you on that, okay? But I just want to tell you, a number-one job. I'd like to see that.
Thank you, Mr. Spatney. I'm sorry to hear about your wife.
Fifty-nine years. Take care.
Take care, sir. Yes, we've gotten a number of wonderful comments on the path. I'd like to take credit for it, but I can't. I'd like to, you know, thank President Salz and the people that were on this board that helped make that decision, Mike Zaluzki, staff that worked closely with them, and to get it done. It is a remarkable, remarkable improvement to our village. So, thank you all. I appreciate it. The next is the consent agenda. We have several items. Ratify the voucher list of bills September 16, 2021. Approve the voucher list of bills October 7, 2021. Approve the Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes September 2, 2021. Review and file historical commission regular meeting minutes July 19, 2021. Review and file Landscape Advisory Commission meeting minutes August 10, 2021. Review and file Community Development, Fire, Police, Public Works Department monthly August reports. A resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a supplemental statement of work contract with municipal GPS partners for not to exceed the amount of $42,922 for 2022 GIS services. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager into various purchase orders for fiscal year 2021. And a resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and enter an agreement with core construction in the amount of $41,728.98 for the installation of safety, of security enhancements within the village office lobby and entryway. Do any of these items, does any trustee want any of these items removed? If not, can I hear a motion in a second, please?
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallagos, second. Second by trustee Pollak. Ms. Monroe, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Calik. Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we have any board and commission reports tonight? Yes, Ms. Evans?
The Economic Development Commission and Riverside TV Commission have teamed up to create a community video project. They are asking for Riversideers to upload photos and short five-to-30-second home videos to our landing page so that we can create a fall showcase of life in Riverside. So, all through October, they will be accepting clips and photos of your favorite or your top fall memories and moments, and the best clips and photos will be made into a video showing what makes our town special. And clips and photos can be submitted at bit.ly backslash. This is Riverside IL.
Thank you, trustee Evans. Anything else? We have no pending business, new business, a resolution endorsing the 2021 Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. Ms. Monroe?
Hi, good evening. So, I'll just mention a couple of things tonight to give preface to what's before you. So, the items presented because of prior commitments to green initiatives and the long-term sustainability of the community made by passports and also Riverside residents that voted overwhelmingly to initiate and promote environmental best practices and procedures. The village has since that time made significant investments in environmental programs, sustainable infrastructure, and so that, we are looking to continue. In 2019, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus initiated some workshops throughout the region to talk about development of a climate action plan for the region. And so, from a staffing perspective, taking this regional approach, a collaborative approach to plans like this is great because while each community is different in its approach and its resources, this large collective action is what's needed to do more, right, as a region. In summer this year, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus introduced the plan to the public, and that's what was included in your packet. The 2021 Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region has several goals, including net zero carbon mitigation by, I think, the year 2050. There's climate adaptation, as well as other activities that we can coordinate between agencies and communities to better sustain those communities in both environmental and social actions. So, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus encouraged communities to adopt or encourage, promote the plan, support the plan, and you'll likely see some other communities in our region and across kind of the Chicago area likely do the same. Showing support for the plan doesn't dedicate Riverside to do specific things at this point in time. It does outline opportunities for us to take actions, but it's really important that the community decides what actions are appropriate for Riverside. And so, we plan as staff to help continue to help you do that. And then, a few things that the board might consider at future meetings could include joining the Greenest Region Compact, which is a group of communities that drafted this initial plan. Riverside isn't currently a member, but there's not a cost to join. I did some research, and it turns out that we just need to do some reporting on the things that we're already doing. So, I think that's my summary of this, and I'll let you have your discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any discussion? If I can have a motion?
I'll make them.
I'm sorry, yes, good.
Just want to preface my comments that, you know, I'm very proud of what the village has done with our parking lots at this board we've talked about providing incentives for various, you know, water collection, eco-friendly action by homeowners. You know, I believe things to be done that need to be done to address this climate crisis. I'm very vague as to what we're committing to here. If this is a purely symbolic vote, I would suggest just symbolically, you know, voting that we are in favor of protecting the client, protecting the climate, addressing climate challenges, using our unique position around the river to naturalize natural resources, go for conservation, go for zero emissions. I've read this report, and I unfortunately left my notes in my office. It was vague to me what we're committing to do here. And I just don't like voting in favor to sign on to something when I, as a trustee, don't completely understand what we're committing the village to do. And if it's to committing us to do nothing, then why not just a symbolic resolution?
I think a lot of the things that are part of this plan are agenda items that we've already done, like the electric aggregation, allowing certain areas to go natural, trying to work with stormwater mitigations and things like that. So, I mean, a lot of the stuff we're already doing. This is more of, I think, a resolution to say that we're committed to continue and as opportunities for us to continue to help with climate change. We will continue, like the hybrid police car, things like that. I don't think it tells us we have to do something, but it tells us that, or it asks us to be conscious of our decisions and conscious of our purchases and conscious of mitigation that we can do.
And I agree with all that, and I think we are, I mean, we've had many votes where we voted in favor of the items that you mentioned. I'm just concerned of this document, you know, and our commitment to it coming back for some unintended result. And I keep asking myself, you know, is this a vote in favor of, you know, taking steps to minimize climate change? Then I'll vote all day yes. But what am I voting for, you know, that's new than what you pointed out? Because we've done all those things, and we're committed to it. And I think we all, as a board, are committed to it. It's, you know, our flooding, our weather events, we need to. But I just don't, you know, I don't like taking that next step and saying this, you know, 175-page plan we're committing to. Because I read it, like I said, took some notes, and I can't say with absolute certainty what we're committing to. And if someone can explain it to me, I'd love to have that happen, but I don't, you know, I like to think I read a lot of documents. I couldn't come to a conclusion.
If I may, I think this is not one of these, you know, scary unfunded mandate things. The Climate Action Plan sets forth a schedule by which, you know, the people who drafted it would like our region to reach zero emissions by its stage. So, by the end of 2030, which is just in nine years, we've got to cut levels of carbon emissions by 50% from 2005 levels. And then so on and so on until you get to the end of 2050. In addition, there is a goal, a regional goal that has been articulated, of making our communities resilient to be able to address and respond to incidents, like whether they be social or public health incidents, or flooding, or what have you, that result from these extreme temperatures. And it is, it is something that I think is really, really important for us, to get on board with this schedule, with this plan, with these goals, and working together to accomplish them. I mean, I would like us to see, I would like to see us be members of the, you know, Green Regional Compact. That, it does have reporting requirements attached to it. This does not. But I really think it's an important thing for us to do because we have children, you know, and what are we going to do for them if we do not begin and pledge? I mean, 50 major cities across the country have developed regional climate action plans. The Chicago metro region is just one of them. So, I mean, it's, what do you think globally and act locally? I mean, that's what this is getting to. It's asking all of us to begin at home where we live. So, you know, to endorse a plan like this just doesn't seem, you know, particularly taxing. We have to show our children that we're willing to do something.
And that's so far from my point. And I think one thing that you said sort of crystallized the problem. We're setting a goal to go to zero emissions. So, if we get to the point where we're not at zero emissions, and it comes down to fixing our sewers or buying more electronic cars, can this, someone say, well, we passed this. So, we made the zero emissions as a priority. I mean, again, I agree with everything you say about taking steps. I agree with everything you say about protecting the client, the climate. I believe we're doing a lot of those things. Every time something has come up, we've all been very supportive. Again, I, you know, if this is a loss to the aspiration, you know, let's say, you know, this is aspirational, and, you know, we're in favor of being aspirational. But to endorse a plan that the village is going to adopt comes with costs. And we have not identified those costs or thought through what, by adopting this, what are we binding ourselves to? And if it's nothing, then what's the point?
Trustee Pollak, excuse me, go ahead.
I read through this, and staff, please correct me if I'm misinterpreting what we're considering here, but I hate to say it this way because it devalues what we're doing, and this is valuable, but it is a symbolic resolution. It's nothing more than that, but it's a token of our support for addressing climate change. It does not commit us to anything. In the scenario you described, if we had to choose between a new sewer project or electric cars, and we chose the sewer project, we're not going to get penalized. There's absolutely no consequences, as I understand it, if we make a decision that someone claims is counter to this document. Am I correct about all that?
We're not being asked to support it. We're being asked to endorse it, which is a huge distinction. If you say you want to support this, I'm voting yes. If you say you want to endorse this, I'm saying, what are we signing on to? And nobody has been able to say what we're signing on to. I've been told by two trustees, we're signing on to nothing. Then what's the point of endorsing it rather than just support it?
I'm not sure what the difference between support and endorsement is. I think, can we have a motion? Can I have a second?
Well, I just want to say, I took it as we're making a commitment to acting conscientiously when we make future ideas. We're putting that as a priority.
I'm sorry.
We're acting, we're making a commitment to acting conscientiously for our future decisions. We're taking into consideration being more agree. That's what we're making a commitment to. Not one specific thing, just things in general. And that's why I think you're favorable to this. And you're making a face.
Well, why don't we just do it?
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion by trustee Evans, second by trustee Gallagos. Ms. Monroe, would please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
I'll abstain.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion of the five-year financial forecast plan. Since Ms. Johns is not here, Manager Francis will be walking us through this.
Thank you, President Ballerine. I will do my best to walk you through it. First item that I did want to point out, which I think is really key, that we haven't seen in many, many years, is the projected surplus right now based on preliminary numbers for fiscal year 2021. We're projecting a surplus of approximately $632,000. That is after we back out the ARPA funds of $582,000. So, I thought that was very important to direct your attention to that. As you hear of other communities struggling to come up with balanced budgets or struggling with deficits, we are in a good financial position. And that's why we do a financial forecast, is to see where we were, where we are, and where we're looking to be. I do want to also inform board members, those that have seen me present these type of financial forecasts previously or participated in them. The financial forecast is a living, breathing document. This is a snapshot in time, and as things change, month to month almost, you know, it's really hard to target. But while staff does their best efforts to say, this is what we're projecting out over the next five years, you'll notice if you look back at other financial forecasts, they look starkly different from this current one, and they'll continue to do so. But I really wanted, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished for this current fiscal year and what we're trending right now based on preliminary budget submissions. That, once again, this isn't a final budget presentation. The budget presentation will begin at the second medium October, so I wanted to caution you on that one as I start diving in. I wanted to kind of give you certain highlights as it relates to the financial forecast. And if it's okay with President Ballerine, if there are any questions that come up on specific items that I'm pointing to, that the board members can go ahead and ask questions. So, based on page 269, you will see a table illustrating our property taxes. And you will notice that over time, property taxes that go directly to the pension fund has increased significantly and will continue to do so. Based on Director Johns' forecast, she has estimated a 5% annual increase. Within, so as we touch on different things, I may also ask different questions of the board members when I think it's appropriate. As it relates to property taxes, given that we are anticipating a surplus at the end of this fiscal year, one of the questions that Director Johns has is, for some of the board members that may recall, and perhaps even new board members, we had budgeted only the recommended pension funding for the police pension. So, there's two different things. There's recommended, and there's required. So, Department of Insurance and Professional Regulations provides us with what's required. The actuary for the police pension fund says this is what's recommended, based on your mortality tables, based on where people are retiring, and all of that information. So, at a minimum, you have to put in what is required based on Department of Insurance regulations. And so, that is what we did. However, given that what we are trending currently as it relates to expectations for year-end surplus, it would be staff's recommendation that we make the additional contribution so that we are actually putting in what was recommended. And so, that is actually anticipated. If you look at the detail that was provided on page, sorry, of the supplemental materials under Police Administration, we actually did put in the whole dollar amount of, sorry, 1.5 million. We initially had a budget of 1.342 million. And so, with the board's approval, as we put together our projections for presentation and budget for fiscal year 2022, it is our question of whether or not the board is supportive of us doing that, and then we would incorporate that into the number. of us doing that, and then we would incorporate that into the numbers that are presented to you at the next meeting.
Why did the board elect to go with just the required amount last time? Was it COVID concern revenue?
Because, yes, that is exactly it. Those that know me very well, I tend to be conservative, and there's a reason for that, as it relates to our budget revenues and expenditures, is because they never want to put us in a position where we're running at a deficit. I'd rather us be deriving a surplus and figure out how do we spend the money than overspend, and try to figure out, how do we adjust to that? And so at that point in time, being conservative, that was what was presented to the board, and then if we had the opportunity where we are driving the surplus, then staff would bring it back and recommend that we basically do a catch-up payment at the end of the fiscal year.
And it's staff's recommendation that we go with the recommended amount?
That, yes. That's correct.
Thank you.
So are we, if I understand this correctly, we went with the required mark for, for last year?
For fiscal year 2021, correct.
Okay. So what we're doing for fiscal year 2022 is doing the recommended rep, plus making up the, the difference between the recommended and required from last year?
I would recommend, because we can still make that additional payment in fiscal year 2021. So what we would do is, we would do an allocation and do a lump sum payment to the pension fund for that difference between the required and the recommended for this year. And then staff is also including the recommended level for next fiscal year. And really, that is the best practice, is to do recommended, to make sure that you're hitting your milestones as it relates to the, the actuary, because we want to see our funding levels go up. So, and I will also point out, in the positive, on page 291 of your packet, you'll notice our funding levels went from 37.47% to 42.31%. So we want to keep, we, we need to make, ensure that we're continuing to fund, and essentially catch up, and hopefully the market continues to be kind to the pension fund, and so we, we get above the 50% mark with regard to our funding levels.
Trustee Pollak? What are the actual numbers we're talking about? What is the required minimum, and what is being recommended for this year?
So for, sorry, hold on. Switch my page. So, last year, we budgeted $1,342,450. We are projecting, which would have been the recommended, $1,513,819, as our projected. So that would be the recommended. And next year, for, and obviously, we'll cover more things as it relates to fiscal year 2022, but we've already started to capture the recommended of 1.5 million.
So the, for, for this upcoming budget, the recommended amount is 1.5 million. What's the required for this upcoming?
The required for 2021 was 1.342 million.
I think he's asking, what's the required for 2022? Is that what you're asking? Yes.
I don't have that one readily available.
I would, I would assume that the percentage is going to be, you know, in the 150, correct? I mean, it shouldn't be too much off of 2021 numbers, I would assume, since the, since the, the recommended is very close to the recommended for 2021.
Right. I, for the purposes of this evening's discussion, is, are we going to contribute the additional dollar amount, so that we can figure out your projec-
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Huska, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Are there any negative repercussions for simply going with the base required amount? I mean, are there any ripple effects from doing that that we should be aware of?
For the, so you lose your compounded interest, or investment return, and so obviously, it behooves us to put in as much as we can, because really, the goal is to get our funding levels up to where they should be. If the village recalls, we got downgraded slightly by standard and poor from our AAA rating. It was because of our pension funding level. It had nothing to do with our other financial practices. Everything else was pristine. It was specifically to do with the police pension fund. And so we need to be mindful of that, because anytime we issued that, that, if, no longer being AAA, we're getting a slightly higher interest rate. So there is an impact, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Hannan?
On page 177, you know, first of all, you know, great job to you and the staff on managing this process through COVID. Going back to Trustee Clarity's question, when we passed the budget last year, it was truly frightening time, not knowing if the revenues would start back up. So the fact that we have a projected surplus, I think is just illustrative of, of what a great and mindful job village staff does on managing costs and, and managing revenues. Page 277, we have some numbers behind the, the Irma excess surplus balance.
Yes.
And I would just love some explanations on, what are we looking at? And, you know, in past board meetings, we've talked about using that as a rainy day fund, and just want to understand what it is I'm looking at.
Certainly. So in the one column, it shows the, the fiscal years and the current balances for those fiscal years. So you have your fiscal year, your Irma excess surplus, that's your current balance. So for 2021, ours is $1,047,439. When you see the excess surplus increases from the, the previous year, that 231,656, that is based on not only interest that Irma has received on cash that they're holding for, on behalf of the Village of Riverside, but also money that they're returning. So for, just to give a little bit, and not get too far in the weeds, as it relates to risk management pools, the purpose of them is to collect enough money to pay the claims, and to pay to support the administration of the pool. That is it. They are not there to make more money than what is necessary to sustain as a pool. And so, year after year, so prior to 2013, the practice of the village at that point in time had been, they would take whatever was returned back, and sometimes it's smaller, sometimes it's more, it depends on investment returns and how claims are in those giving years. But the village would actually use that money to decrease their contribution to Irma. And so year after year, there would be no accumulation of the excess surplus. And then the board, at that point in time, essentially in 2013, after some discussion and changes to our Irma deductible, which is now at $50,000, we started to keep that money there. And now it has grown significantly. So what this table illustrates is just what our money has done over the years. So not only, how Irma has done a really good job of managing our funds, minimizing our claims and exposures, and working with the pool as a whole, which then, then they can return funds back to their members, but also making sure that they have solid investment returns.
And, and am I correct that Irma, Irma's rate of return is much better than our interest rate of return if we were to hold this money?
Yes. So if you're looking at it on an average annualized basis, it's right around 6% to 6.5%, depending on the market. So obviously, any cash that we have sitting in the bank, even CDs, is not getting nearly that much.
One question I'd love to get addressed in the budget process is, you know, at, at what point does this number get unreasonably large, that we should think, you know, one of, one of the aspects that President Ballerin talked about is, do, you know, when we switch over the meters, do we somehow supplement those costs, so people aren't coming out of pocket, either for seniors, disabled, or across the board? And if there's a surplus, you know, if, if, I'm looking at these numbers, and I don't know how much is too much. So, you know, I'm, I'm looking to sort of staff expertise on saying, okay, if, if it gets to dollar X, is it time to start some, drawing that out to fund some of these improvements and sewer projects and other things that, that we struggle with?
And, and that's up to the board. So some villages have had those discussions of, we're going to build up our fund balance because we know in five years, we're going to have a fire truck to replace, for, for those really large capital expenditures. I would caution you on using the excess surplus for water meters, because whatever we do as it relates to water and sewer should inherently be paid out of the enterprise fund. But you can utilize it for, for other purposes, the excess surplus. So that's definitely an item that, that the board can have a discussion on.
And there's one other follow-up question. On the, the summary sheet, the supplemental material that you handed out, at the bottom, we have transfers out for 2021 projection and 2022. I, I could not figure out what that was for.
That's your ARPA funds.
Okay.
Yes. So that, as part of that discussion, when we said these different projects would be covered under the ARPA, we, so as soon as we put it in as a revenue, we wanted to back it out, because we don't want to show any artificial surplus, and so this is the, the best way to illustrate that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
We did have a conversation this year to use, we were talking about using that, that money for something. I can't remember what it was. We decided that we weren't going to leave it at Irma because of the rate of return.
I think it was for facility improvements, I believe.
Okay. Trustee Pollak, sorry. Did you get the direction you needed on the pension levy? Or we still need to?
I believe that's still an open item. Thank you, Trustee Pollak.
I guess I'm, I'm fine doing the recommended, as long, you know, obviously, we've got to look into the context of the entire budget, but if you feel at this point that that's something we can afford to do, then certainly we should do it, in my opinion. So you're, what we're talking about is not only making the recommended for 2022, but coming from required to recommended for 2021 also? Again, if, if we can afford it, I, it's, it's, it's an, you know, it's, it's a difficult decision to make, when you, because we're, you know, paying forward, we're paying for what might happen 20, 30 years from now, using taxpayers' dollars today. So it's a very difficult decision to make, but if it has a significant impact on that pension fund, and we can afford it, then I suppose we can do it, and we should do it in theory, generally speaking. Any other?
I see it as a responsible thing to do, so I'm fine with that as well.
Trustee Huska?
Yeah, I think we should go with the recommended amount.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I sat in on some of those credit rating discussions with us, the standard board, and it, it would be widely beneficial to get back to that AAA credit rating. So whatever we can do to do that is, is beneficial to the village at all.
Thank you.
I agree.
Trustee Clarity?
I agree with staff recommendation.
Okay. One down.
Okay. So I'll just start, continue to walk you through some of the other forecast items. You'll notice that sales tax, you've, we've seen this huge, we've experienced this huge jump, which actually is also affording us to make that additional contribution to the police pension fund. And that is predominantly in Part II, South Dakota v Wayfair, which are online sales tax, that is now coming to Riverside for items that are being delivered to Riverside. So I just wanted to, to point that out. We're starting to notice places for eating tax stabilizing, and we also include an incremental increase as it relates to places for eating tax. You'll start to notice, like, back in 2011, pretty much prior to 2017, that there were many different fluctuations. And based on analysis and review, putting it more at a stable, approximately 70,000 to 80,000, as we're seeing different storefronts opening up. And obviously, that one is subject to change and subject to volatility. Next, I'll draw your attention to the utility and telecom tax. So you will notice that we have start, we have experienced over several years a significant decrease. And big part of that is not your NICOR or your electric tax, that is actually due to your simplified municipal telecom tax. No more landlines. And as it relates to different fiber networks, those are not taxable through the simplified municipal tax. And so we will probably continue to see that trend. It's something that is of concern to not only myself and Director Johns, but also other managers within this area, because fiber services still require utilization of Village Right-Away. And so we continue to have discussions through our managers group, and then also in communication with the Illinois Municipal League. So I wanted to draw your attention to that. But despite that, we're still able to meet expectations as it relates to revenue in other places. Cable franchise fees is another item that is leveling out, as residents start to go to streaming services, and so we will keep an eye on that trend to see if it further dips. But that is essentially pretty close to a flat line at 0.5% incremental increases. Then we have state per capita taxes, which include income, use, and cannabis tax. I will tell you that we continue to be very conservative on those. For the cannabis tax, despite us not having a dispensary, what many may not realize is there is still a per capita tax that the state assesses and then remits to communities, and that's based on your population. They are still calculating our LGDF, which include our income tax, our use tax, and also our cannabis tax specifically, under our previous population. I have reached out to find out when the population, based on the final census numbers, will be updated, so when we can anticipate that trend changing. But once again, extremely conservative, which still, based on these conservative numbers for fiscal year 2022, we're still looking to the positive. Building and zoning fees, you will notice that there was significant spike this year. Construction trend is still continuing, even though we're in October currently. It's not really slowing down, as Assistant Village Manager Monroe can attest to. But we also are projecting that that will start to decrease and then stabilize, and so that is what's illustrated and included in the forecast. Then we have recreation fees. Fiscal year 2020 was not a good year for Parks and Recreation. However, we are projecting a rebound and looking for additional growth within that department in future years. And then we have our water and sewer fees, and where we anticipate them to be, which actually brings, yes.
Do you want to talk about number two?
I'm sorry, do I?
Yeah. About the?
Thank you. So Parks and Recreation. They have, over the years, absorbed a number of costs as it relates to the village's special events. And in the past, the board's discussion had been, you know, they're doing fairly well, and if they need more of the tax levy, or if we need to absorb costs through the general fund for those special events, we'll discuss that. Well, now that they have Quincy that they have to repay, and also, given that they had a really bad fiscal year in 2020, I would recommend that the board have that discussion about whether or not it's changing their levy from the minimum, which is statutorily required, or, as an, an alternative, is saying that the general fund will pay for the special events, and it will be outside of Parks and Rec. While it will be managed and coordinated through Parks and Rec, it will not be their burden to pay those costs.
They get 0.667, correct?
Yes.
And then what can it be raised?
0.066.
Yeah, 0.06, okay.
It can be raised to, hold on. 0.09.
And?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's via referendum. I do believe it's 0.09. I don't know that that is via referendum. Michael?
Yeah, 0.09 is the maximum without referendum.
Beyond, okay. Beyond, okay.
Well, how much are we spending on these special events as far as the Parks and Recreation budget right now?
So there's a number of different costs. And what we've tried to do, because the previous boards have asked us to do a better job of tracking some of those, so like police costs and things, police, Parks and Rec, public works, all that, and so now we've actually pulled it out of different departments and started to track it under Parks and Rec. The problem is, is those aren't completely Parks and Rec's costs, it's across various departments. So it's approximately estimated to be around $80,000 to $100,000. And so from, it doesn't seem appropriate for those that are paying user fees for Parks and Rec programs to be paying for the community's special events. While Parks and Rec can certainly still manage all the events and manage the expenses and go out and get donations, it would seem, from an equity standpoint, that we would want to make sure that they're not absorbing those costs.
But you're recommending this change in part because of the Quincy building?
I'm, well, I'm recommending it not only because they have the cost of the Quincy building, but also from just a philosophical standpoint. When the board started asking us to piece this out, there wasn't really a discussion of, well, should Parks and Rec really be paying for an EDC event, public works allocation, just because they're helping coordinate it? And so really, that's what it comes down to, is really should residents that are signing up for yoga be paying for?
Ravinia.
Thank you.
I would, so our question is, should we roll those special events into the general fund?
Should we take them outside of Parks and Rec? Yes. While they can still manage it, should it be whether allocated under a different divi, perhaps the village manager's office division will still manage under Parks and Rec? Or do we still keep it under the Parks and Rec classification? However, with the understanding that those costs are below the bottom line when we're looking at whether or not they're deriving an appropriate surplus based on the revenue and expense for their activities.
Okay.
Is one of the possibilities that we have a separate budget item for special events? And rather than just coming out of the general fund, we have a, I don't know if it's a separate fund or separate allocation, that here's the budget for separate, for special events. I like the idea of it falling under the village manager, because it does apply to so many different departments and have that budget item from year to year, and that's the amount that's designated for these special events, instead of just, I'm nervous about it just coming out of the general fund, because then it just gets lost in everything else that comes out of the general fund.
So it would still be a separate division. So we could move it out of Parks and Rec, so that when they're looking at their budget and we're doing a true-up as it relates to their fund balance assignment, we're not looking at the special events that the community and the board want to have, but really are separate and distinct from Parks and Recreation activities.
So if we, let's say we do, we'll use Ravinia for an example. Obviously, we have the costs, the hard costs. But are you saying we also follow how much it costs to put the fencing around, the time it takes for public works, even though public works is still working that day?
We've started to refine our processes, because that was the direction of a couple of boards ago, that we wanted to get more precise numbers. 2020, in 2021, we didn't have very many special events, but obviously, we started collecting that data and setting up systems to equip us to better track the true cost of the special events, which, when you're starting to look at the public works and the police and fire and then staff allocation from Parks and Rec, it's, like I said, the range is approximately 80,000 to 100,000, because then you also have your services and commodities that you're purchasing for the different events.
I guess I get somewhat confused by the fact that if public works, if you have a crew that's working already, and they're just diverted from cutting grass to putting up a fence, you know, how does that get part of, you know, how does that become part of the thing? Now, I understand if they have to come in late to break down the fence, or if they have to, you know, work late to clean up the garbage, I get that. But if it's in the scope of their normal workday?
So what we've been doing, because public works, obviously, anytime there's a special event, they basically queue up different things because they have to plan. They know that, okay, on this day, we're putting up fencing. And so the schedule changes based on those things. So to figure out the true and actual cost of a special event, that's why we started creating these project codes, so that the board was aware of. You know, even though it's during the regular workday, other things have had to be shifted and moved around, and there's potential overtime that has had to occur in order for them to be ready for that special event on that given day.
Okay. So really, we have two questions here, is whether we want to remove special events from the Parks and Rec department and put it under a special category under the village manager? So that's the first question. And if we do that, then there?
We do that, then we don't have to have the further discussion about their levy unless the board wants to increase their levy allocation beyond the .06.
Okay. Do we have any consensus on where you want to go with this?
I'd be in favor of special events no longer being under Parks and Recreation. Let the village staff take care of that and administrate.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Alex, trustee Gallegos would rather have special events under the manager's account, take it out of recreation.
Rather than take it out of recreation?
Right, take it out of the recreation.
Is this how other villages handle this, like, special events are not run through the rec budget?
So most villages don't have a Parks and Rec department. Traditionally, so we don't have, this is the good news, we don't have a separate taxing body of a park district, we have a Parks and Rec department. That's, sorry, Ron, that's the bad side, because they take part of our levy. So while it's very fiscally responsible, they don't have the same authorities as a park district. So, but the unique piece is that we're saving residents' money, because it's under the village umbrella, and so there's value added to that. So we do capitalize on that, where, you know, Parks and Rec staff is able to coordinate these different events and are able to help different community groups, give them feedback on different events that they're organizing, or if there's a commission that is looking at organizing an event, they also, the staff leans on Parks and Rec, given their experience with special events.
I think the residents view these as parks events, right? I understand that we have a difference here academically, but I do think the residents view them as parks. I don't feel very strongly one way or the other. I'm a little, I just want to make sure we're conscious of the optics of changing what the numbers look like for parks, at the same time when Parks has, you know, a new building that we're paying for. I do think residents are watching that a little bit, so I want to be clear about the messaging or make sure that we're clear exactly how the numbers are moving.
Sure. Well, so for a little bit more clarity, no pun intended, is that Parks and Rec, so previously, like I said, we've started to refine our processes and assign project codes, not to get too much into the weeds of how public works or police or fires' time is allocated. In the past, it was under the general fund, and it was under the specific department divisions. And so we're changing this, because we've finally got a process going that's more efficient, but now it's increasing Parks and Rec expenses substantially, for which they don't have an offsetting revenue. And so from just an optics standpoint, we're actually doing nothing different by pulling it out. If the board's position is, well, we still want them to pay for commodities, which they had done previously, I think that is a fair argument to be made. But as it relates to staff time, that should really be, the cost should be bared by the general fund, because historically, that's what's been done.
I would agree with that. Trustee Evans?
Do we ask for any financial commitment from the organizations that are requesting special event assistance?
So the only time, so if someone's looking at doing something of just being good partners, no, we don't bill them. So if someone reaches out and says, I'm not sure exactly of the proper setup, I'll say, you know what, want to connect you with Ron, he'll be able to kind of guide you through it, and then if you need additional feedback from public safety or public works, he can coordinate it. So no, we don't charge, it's just about being good partners and collaborating, whether it's with our different nonprofits or business owners and trying to achieve, because it's to benefit the community as a whole. And so in those situations, it's difficult to quantify. They do, and they will continue to try to get funding through sponsorships, so that not only can we pay for more of the hard costs of the services, bans, and commodities for future events, but also the goal really is to try to expand some of the events too in the future.
So the hard costs would still come out of Parks and Rec?
We could still have the services and the commodities come out of Parks and Rec, and we could remove the personnel piece.
And then, what I like about that is because Ron has, you know, built a rapport with, you know, various different businesses in town, and they feel comfortable, you know, sponsoring or, you know, giving money to the rec department, so that would, and I think that's actually cleaner, because then we can see where the costs of an event versus the sponsorship of an event, and then the village takes care of the manpower piece. I actually like that. Trustee Pollak, sorry.
Is the real question here how we want to pay for it? In other words, do we want to pay for it through existing general fund revenues? Or do we want to pay for it through the additional levy that we can impose?
Well, so it's kind of optics, because really, there is no additional levy. You have your hard levy amount, and it's, do we want to take what's, let's say it's $4 million. So if, do we want to take $100,000 and allocate it to Parks and Rec of that $4 million, or are we allocating $200,000 is more of the question.
I don't think I followed that.
So any, our tax levy, sorry, our tax levy in its entirety only increases by CPI. And of that total pot, you have a portion allocated to police pension, and you have a portion or percentage allocated statutorily to Parks and Rec. And so do we want to expand that allocation of what is for Parks and Rec? Or do we just want to say those additional personnel costs for our special events are going to remain under the general fund, and user fees, income taxes, and other things will pay to support the personnel costs? The services and commodities would come out of Parks and Rec.
So this idea that we have this, you know, the, I forget the terminology, but we have the .67 or whatever for parks, and we could increase that to .9, that's just its share of the pie? The pie stays the same size?
Exactly.
It's just, it's bookkeeping. You're just out, it's just line items for Ron's department versus?
So either way, this comes out, that money's going to be coming out of general fund.
If you're saying, if you're saying we still want to have the special events, and we want you to figure out how to Parks and Rec to pay for it, well, then user fees are going to have to increase for their programs, and that, to me, just seems in direct conflict, because then nobody's going to sign up for their programs, because they're going to be outpriced. And then we're not going to have special events, because we won't have funding for it.
Well, I feel strongly we need to continue to do the special events, unless there's a middle of a pandemic. We can't, as opposed to hopefully the end of a pandemic, but, yeah, we need to do it. Accounting-wise, I guess I would defer to accountants as to how we should do our books.
So what we're saying is, we will then put the soft costs under the managers, and the hard costs will remain still in Parks?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody in agreement there?
I think so.
Okay.
Yep.
Number three, move on. Oh, I heard an interesting tidbit at the IML conference. Jessica kind of blew over the cannabis, no pun intended, but more money has been raised, tax dollars, by the sale of cannabis than by the sale of alcohol in Illinois. I mean, obviously cannabis has higher tax rate, but there's a lot more alcohol licenses out there than cannabis license. It's an amazing amount of tax revenue. And the first time in 21 years that Illinois' bond rating went up, so that's another. Go ahead.
All right. No, fine. So water and sewer rates. So the board had talked about during the capital planning process, how do we want to fund our water and sewer improvements, and how do we hasten some of those projects that we have in the queue? And some of the discussion was around, could we start incrementally increasing the infrastructure fee? And so based on that discussion, does the board, as part of putting this current budget together, does the board want us to look at incrementally increasing the fee by $1 a month, which would mean the $30 bi-monthly fee would increase to $32? Or as an alternative, does the board want, I have a spreadsheet, does the board want us to, currently for one unit of water and sewer, the rate is $12.72. If we took the $15 per month, or per, I'm sorry, per, oh my goodness, per bi-monthly billing and extracted it, we, our minimum bill for a resident is five units. So if we're taking that $30 by that five units, it would actually be $15.72. So we can do it a number of different ways. Are we looking at having the infrastructure fee included now in the per-unit rate? Therefore, those that are heavy users of water and sewer system would actually be paying a little bit more of their proportionate share based on their usage of the system? Or would the board prefer that we keep the infrastructure fees separate and just doing the incremental increases and see what progress we make based on that? I will remind you for previous boards, the reason why the infrastructure fee was initially made separate was there was anticipation at that point in time that, well, we were going to try to get a couple of projects done, and then hopefully it would go away. Given that our 10-year plan is very robust, it is not anticipated for it to go away over the next 10 years. And so perhaps it would behoove us to roll it into the rate. Therefore, when we're doing incremental increases in the water and sewer rate, that by design would also incrementally increase.
So in other words, somebody that has, for example, a multi-unit building that has one meter pays $32?
$30, right now.
$30, $30. And a resident who has a wife and two kids pays the exact same amount.
Correct. So if you're looking at it from an equity standpoint of a multifamily, where you've got two, with a couple in a single-family home versus a multifamily with 10 units of two couples, with couples in each of it, the single-family home is actually paying more for the infrastructure than the multifamily.
Exactly. That's where this is kind of coming from, is the fact that we're trying to be more equitable in the billing, based on user fees, or based on usage.
Proportionality seems reasonable to me.
Okay. So I will?
Trustee Pollak?
I like, whatever we can do to go to a more progressive rate structure, I'm in favor of. In other words, where it encourages people to use less by charging them more the more they use, I think. they use, I, I think, if, from what I've read in the summary, that's what that would be doing. So, I, I would be in favor of that.
I concur.
And the other thing that I learned at the IML conference, because they had a, kind of an expo, these new water meters, they pick up everything. I mean, it is, there's no moving parts. If you have a small drip in a faucet, it's picked up. So, it's, it's gonna make the, that ratio between lost water and found water shrink. So, I think the, the new meters are good, are gonna be a very good positive for the village, and for the residents, because they'll be able to figure out if they have problems before it's a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, great. We move on to, you got your answer for number three? We're gonna go with a progressive?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to make note that, in the financial forecast for fiscal year 2022, the property tax levy will only increase by 1.4%. That is the percentage change that is permitted via PTEL, and so, obviously, our tax levy incremental increases will not keep pace with the other increases that we're experiencing. So, I just wanted to note that, and that's what always happens with the change in the economy, in the market. We don't necessarily see it or experience it until a year to two years later. And really, the, there's two final pieces that I just wanted to make note of. The village is currently at a fifty thousand dollar deductible. We've already somewhat touched upon our Irma deductibles and the cash that we have on hand. The village always has the opportunity to increase our deductible higher than fifty thousand. Usually, we will get an analysis by Irma. Previous analyses have shown that it's not in our best interest, based on our five-year claims experience, to move to a higher deductible. I would presume, given some of our experience over the past couple of years, that that will remain consistent. However, if the board is interested, we can bring that back at the upcoming budget discussion, or when it is available by Irma.
I'm comfortable staying where we're at.
Thank you.
I think at the very beginning, we used to be like a ten thousand.
No, we were at twenty-five hundred when I started.
Okay. I can remember when we moved to fifty, it was a big move.
It, it was. I was recommending at that point twenty-five, and you, you and Trustee Collins wanted to move up to fifty, and it is, you know, it has proved to be successful. I mean, we've accumulated that, that million dollars that Irma, that wouldn't have occurred if we would have stayed at the lower rate. And I think a hundred thousand's really a tough pill to swallow, and it does make me nervous. So, I would recommend staying, however, if the board would like to see additional data, we're happy to produce it.
I'm fine at fifty.
Also, fine at fifty.
Seems like we're ready.
All right. The final item is the parking lot fund and sharing, or the reimbursement. We've increased it previously by CPI, and we just wanted to confirm that that is the board's direction for fiscal year 2022, and if so, we will incorporate that as part of the budget process, which is incremental, it's 1.4%. Any other questions that the board has?
Well, I actually do, Jessica. I know this, this isn't in the budget, and I don't know what it would take to get it in the budget, but could, could we look at, or have someone on staff look into what it might take to do a, a registration program for, like, landscape contractors, you know, similar to how we did for the landlords in town? Just so we know who is doing business here in the village, so that we have a means to, you know, communicate important policies that maybe we would like them to know, because there's, there's a lot that seems that it's taken for granted, and I just don't know the cost-benefit on that, and if we could just sort of look at that and see whether that would be something worthwhile to work in.
Are you talking about licensing our landscapers? Simple licensing?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, hey, I mean, we could make it, and, you know, if they're, you know, grass cutters only, we could make it, you know, a very simple fee, but then, we would have a, a handout that tells them that you park on the same side of the street that the rest of the cars park on, you just don't park wherever you wish. And I think that would be very helpful, because it's, it's...
So, I've come from a community who has done that, so they not only require it for landscapers, but also, and it could be one of the same, those that do snow removal, simply for the fact that we want their insurance on file, we want, you know, sometimes damage happens, and it's not intentional, but being able to have their certificate of insurance, having a contact information. And also, in instances, you do a hang tag, so that you can clearly identify who has a license, who doesn't, and so, then you, you know, educate that individual on the Village of Riverside requires licensing, and so, then they're getting our information as well, when we're doing regular updates to these types of vendors, like we do with our regular contractors within the building department.
Like, is there, would there be a, a level? Like, if you're just a grass cutter, or snow plower? If you're a grass cutter and do hard surfaces, if you do total reconstruction of landscaping?
If it's a landscaper that does do hard surfaces, we do require them to come in for a contractor's license. So, that's, that's, so, there are, there could be a few that we have in our system, that because they're doing certain, certain hardscape, they're coming in and doing that. But the opportunity of creating the different tiers and getting the registration is to also educate those that don't come in to get licensed, that are doing hardscape, before we're going out and having to stop work on a job. They're well aware of it, of these don't require permits, but if you're doing these items, they do require a permit and a contractor license.
Trustee Pollak?
I believe the board talked about that a few years ago.
They did.
And it was, no action was taken, or they decided not to do it, for whatever reason, I don't remember the reasons, but, so, some of that research is already there.
It is, and I can resurrect that.
Yeah. And I know there are villages that do this, so it's common.
Yes.
So, I have mixed feelings about it, I'm not sure what my opinion is about it at this point, but it's worth looking into at some point.
So, as a next action item, if the board's supportive, staff could do a survey of our different comparable communities, find out if they do it, and get additional detail to provide to the board during...
I just have a logistical question. So, if somebody decides they want a landscaper, this year, or people are now starting to ask for snow plow recommendations, so would they have to call the village to find out who's on the list, and then go down the list? Or how do you know?
No, not necessarily, no. If they, so, that's actually an advantage of having them register, is, so, we have a list of licensed contractors, that if a resident will call and ask, we'll provide it to them. So, now, if we have landscapes or snow plow companies as well that are registering, we can provide them that information, then they know their license, and they're fulfilling the village requirements, and so, then, resident would feel more comfortable engaging in business with them.
So, is it optional?
Right now, they are not required to.
So, they could just call anybody anyway?
Yes.
If, I'm saying, if we, if we implemented this registry, even though we had the registry, they could still call anyone, anyone anyway?
If, well, it depends on what the direction of the board is, and if we do include it for snow plowing, for snow removal, then they would have to contact someone that's on the list.
Or, if they contact someone who wasn't on that list, that person would get on the list?
They'd have to get registered.
Just like any contractor. You can call any contractor to remodel your bathroom, and if they're not registered, staff will tell them, get registered.
Yeah. And I would assume that this registration would be very simplistic of, you know, name of business, certificate of insurance, because we're talking landscape, we're not talking someone installing hardscape in your backyard, which would be a different tier or level of contractor.
If you're having a snow plow going up and down your driveway, it would be nice to know that they're insured. Okay. I think it's at least something we should look at.
Okay.
Everybody agree?
I do.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Manager Francis, is that all we have for the...
That is all I have, unless the board has any other questions.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Do we have any trustee reports or, and communications? There is no need for an executive session this evening, so I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to the hearing.
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallagos.
Second.
Second by trustee Pollak. Ms. Monroe, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marchowska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos?
Aye.
Trustee Hannan?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Eight twenty-two. Thank you.